September 30th, I want to welcome you to this committee hearing. Mr. Clerk, we have several items. Why don't we go through the agenda, then we'll get into public comment and things of that nature.
Okay. Would you like me to read all the items, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Item number one is motion Wesson Huesar relative to the city's membership in and representation on the Echo Rapid Transit Joint Powers Authority and an amendment to the Orange Line Development Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. Item number two is resolution Martinez Bonin and CLA report relative to including in the city's federal legislative program support for HR 2972 Lee, the Each Woman Act. Item number three is resolution Sadio Martinez and CLA report relative to including in the city's 2015-16 federal legislative program support for HR 6001 and Senate Bill 3314, the Smithsonian American Latino Act. Item number four is communications from the city clerk and city attorney certificate certification of sufficiency of ordinance initiative resolutions and ordinances relative to a certified initiative petition proposing a building moratorium, restrictions on general plan amendments, and required review of the general plan. And the committee may recess to closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 relative to this item. Item number six is motion Wesson Krikorian for Englander, et cetera, relative to proposed amendments to city council rules, specifically council rules number 7, 8, 11, 12, 22, 62, and 63. Pardon me. Item number six is motion Wesson Martinez relative to clarifying city rules to align with state law on electronic communications to allow for the public to be informed regarding city events, public safety emergencies, and other related duties and responsibilities during election blackout periods. Item number seven is resolution of Pharoah Wesson at all and CLA report relative to including in the city's federal legislative program support for legislation or administrative action that upholds the rights of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and denies the construction of the Dakota Access Pipeline through their lands. And for the record, items number two through seven are scheduled for council today after this meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, why don't we hold items four and five, and then I believe that we can vote on the remaining items unless you have additional cards.
Yes, sir. We do have additional cards on items number seven, and I believe item number one, items number one, two, three, and I believe six and as well.
Okay, why don't you just bring me the cards then, and let's get this started.
Okay.
All right, let's start off with, let me get item, item, we'll start off with item one. I have Mr. Spindler. You will come up, we'll give you, you have, I have three cards on you. Well, we'll give you, I have, we'll give you three minutes. All right, go right ahead.
Okay, I'll let them pick a dress.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everybody coming out this morning. Now, number one, yes, I put a card in, I realize and further thought it's bullshit, so I'll just get to number two. Number two, legislated for women involved in insurance programs. Isn't there enough insurance? How much more? We have Obamacare. It saved everybody's life. So vote no because Obamacare fixed everything. It's such a good president, right?
Right.
Okay. Number three, this is normally a good thing, but the Honorable Antonia Ramirez, who cannot be here this morning, would oppose this. She refers to this thing as something called a chongo. So I don't know what that is. It's something about the chongo. So we would support a no vote on number three. Now, number four, number four is a building moratorium. What? You can't do that. You won't get any more campaign donations if you pass these. Campaign donations is the key to this body's existence. You'll have to get real jobs if this passes. You'll have to work at McDonald's or Wendy's. No. You want to make the big money. And I'm especially worried about Marquezzi because he have to go back instead of being the future council president.
Amen. Address, address the committee, not individual members.
I think Marquezzi make a good president.
Hey, you just heard what I said. You want to speak, you address the committee, not the individuals on the committee.
Okay, I'm just mentioning leadership. All right, so I will vote myself yes, but I know that others will vote no, but the people are going to vote yes, I think. So flipping burgers is in the future, nee, 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 nee. And then we get to number five. Well, these are the papita pig rules of the new council decorum. You're going to limit the pig to two minutes at committee meetings? Think it's going to improve? No. Things are going to become more bullshit-like. We'll get into the mud. Well, I'm a pig, I love the mud, oh, the mud. Okay, number six, the city will be blacked out? Of course, you're participating a riot. And you know what we have to do at the Olympics? No Olympics in LA because we're going to have a riot. It's our number six. Thank you for meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Where's Eric Previn? Okay, I'm gonna, I think we can move items one, three, four, and six.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For item number one, I believe there's a revised recommendation. Would you like me to read that?
Would you please?
For item number one, the revised recommendation is that the council approve the City of Los Angeles' membership in the Echo Rapid Transit Joint Powers Authority formerly known as the Orange Line Development Authority and authorize the President of the City Council to negotiate and execute the necessary amendment to the Orange Line Development Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, subject to the approval of the city attorney as to form and legality.
Okay, thank you. So on these items, unless Mr. Harris Dawson has a concern, without objection, these items will be deemed approved? Okay, let's, let me take a card. I have Emily Zan on item two. Please come forward. Okay, I have one card. You get the one minute, Ms. Zan.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for hearing my comments today. My name is Emily Zan. I work at the Planned Parenthood Affiliates of California, and today I'm here to testify on behalf of the Los Angeles Coalition for Reproductive Justice, a coalition of over 20 social justice organizations collaborating to enhance reproductive health, rights, and justice in Los Angeles. As a newcomer to LA, a Planned Parenthood employee and a woman, I know how lucky we are to live in a state like California where Medi-Cal coverage of abortion means that approximately 439,000 women of reproductive age in LA are able to use their insurance for this important medical procedure. I also know that insurance, abortion coverage bans like the Hyde Amendment disproportionately impact communities who already face barriers to quality healthcare, including low-income people, women of color, young people, immigrants, and transgender or gender nonconforming people. Every year since 1976, Congress has included the Hyde Amendment in federal appropriations legislation, therefore restricting Medicaid coverage for abortion care. Here in LA, despite Medi-Cal coverage for abortion, there are over 11,000 women of reproductive age who are insured through the federal government whose insurance does not cover abortion, including veterans and armed service members on TRICARE, people on Medicare, Native Americans who use Indian Health Services, and federal government employees. The resolution in front of you today calls for the adoption of the Each Woman Act. The Each Woman Act would ensure that everyone who receives care or insurance through the federal government would have abortion coverage. It also prohibits politicians from interfering with the private insurance market to prevent insurance companies from providing abortion coverage. The two measures of the Each Woman Act would lift the bans on abortion coverage and ensure that all women have an equal ability to make personal life decisions regardless of how much she earns, how she is insured, or where she lives. The Los Angeles City Council has a long history of taking action to support important social justice issues and challenges facing this country.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that's the last card on that item. And so, Mr. Clerk, and then I want to look over to Mr. Harris Dawson. On item two, I would recommend that we adopt the CLA report and the resolution. And if you're comfortable with that, that will be the action.
We would agree with that.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, without objection, we will adopt the CLA report and resolution on item two.
Okay, sir. And also on item number four, did you want to reopen that for consideration? We do have cards on that item. I believe you may have stated that that was approved.
Okay, well, I will, remind me of that later. I'm gonna do, what I'm gonna do now, we're gonna move into item five. So if you'd read that item again.
Item number five is motion Wesson Krikorian for Englander at all relative to proposed amendments to the city council rules, specifically council rules numbers seven, eight, 11, 12, 22, 62, and 63.
Okay, why don't you read the amendment? In fact, you know, yeah, read the amendment.
The amendment is as follows. Amend the motion by replacing the language of rule number eight with the following. Eight, number eight, council rule number eight, public hearings. Public hearing items scheduled for regular meetings are afforded special notice for a specific council meeting date and are intended to receive separate public input on a specific matter. Interested persons, for example applicants, appellants, and property owners shall be given reasonable opportunity to present oral arguments for or against any proposed action. However, no person may present evidence not relevant to the matter which is the subject of the hearing. The presiding officer may exercise his or her discretion, subject to reversal by a majority of the council pursuant to rule number 15, in conducting the public comment period, including reordering the order of business as set forth in rule number 22, and providing additional time for a member of the public to speak as long as other speakers are afforded equal time.
Okay, so let's bring up one minute. I want Doug Haynes. I can't quite make out this other, is it Jury, is it Julie Jury? Jay Bieber, okay. Mickey Jackson, Anna Gagin, John Walsh. Yes.
First off, I believe that the agenda and description does not satisfy the Brown Act requirement that the wording not be a code phrase unintelligible to the public. Nobody knows what council rules numbers seven, eight, 11, et cetera are. The agenda should read amendments to council rules to limit public speaking time. Then it would be something that the community would understand. There is no community impact statement on this item because this item was slipped in yesterday and the community is not aware of it. Also, I will point out for council, because it says special agenda items, special agenda items require that all agendas be open for public comment. And that's in the Brown Act that says every notice for a special meeting shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body concerning any item that has been scribed in the notice. So when it goes to council, it must be open for public comment also. I don't believe that this is really proper. Please delay this so the neighborhood councils could have input on it and the community is more aware of what's going on. Limiting our comment time.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could get Mickey Jackson, I think it's Bieber, Gagin, Walsh, please come forward.
I agree with everything Doug Haynes said. New city hall public comment rules will make it harder to conduct due process hearings at Los Angeles City Council meetings and committee meetings. The new rules on multiple items means that community members or land use appellants will be forced to testify before an item is called on the agenda for public hearing. Additionally, they may be forced to comment or present their land use appeals before any amending motion is made public under current city council rules. In other words, on crafting new rules targeting certain frequent public commenters at city council and committees is about to, the city council is about to shoot itself in the foot as a matter of constitutional due process and the Brown Act rules on distribution of written materials. This matter should be sent back to the city attorney to consider how the council will conduct its affairs in accordance with due process and land use appellants, adjacent property owners, as well as the Brown Act requirements. This is draconian.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Good afternoon, sorry, good morning. My name is Jay Bieber. I echo the things that have already been said, but I also want to talk to this body regarding the fact that there are members of the public who do come to city council and provide very valuable information to members of committees and also to city council. And to punish everyone for what may be perceived as something that the city council doesn't approve of or like from certain members of the public is not the proper way to do this. There is important information that you get from the public, and it's also, you talk a lot about wanting the public to be involved, wanting the public to vote. This is the kinds of, these kinds of things are the reason that the public feels that they don't want to engage with their, and that they can't engage with their elected officials. I think this is the wrong way to go. And as a member of the neighborhood council system, to not give the neighborhood councils or the rest of the public time to comment on this is not appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Good morning. I'm Annie Gagin. I am opposed to this as a neighborhood council board member. The last few years, we all have to do our ethics training and are well aware of the Brown Act, and we abide by all the rules. However, the city council seems to think they don't have to. You're setting a terrible example here with an initiative on the ballot that you obviously are all opposed to. One would think that you would make some effort to be more transparent and to listen to the communities of Los Angeles rather than now limiting their time to speak about what's going on in their communities. It's just shameful. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can get Mr. Walsh, Grace Yu, and Ms. Abrams.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The Brown Act says you must establish reasonable rules. Five minutes is reasonable. Okay, if you don't think we're gonna go to court, you're wrong, and we're gonna take your nose and squash it in this, in this crappy rule, and you'll enjoy it. I'm telling you right now, if you, then comes two minutes, then comes one minute, then comes 60 seconds, because this is fascinating. I hope you all saw that nine-year-old African-American girl speaking in Charlotte under public comment. It was heard throughout the world. She wouldn't have, all she would have gotten here was, was 60 seconds. You want to be the number one guy? You want to run things? We'll go to court, and the judge is always, this is unreasonable, unreasonable. And anyone who votes for it, let him do it in front of the camera.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Yes, Mr. Abrams, Ms. Yu.
Hi. Okay, the council has long ignored fair speaking rules in many venues, all right? One is that they land use hearings. We've gone to court many times. We've complained about it during, you know, these EIRs and these planning cases, that we never know how much time we're gonna get to speak. And so I think that leaving something to the call of the chair, how much time you get to speak, is just arbitrary and unfair. It's part of your job to listen. You're paid to listen. That's why you're here, to find out what the public thinks about issues that come before this body. And so I think that it's wrong for you to treat the speakers basically as if they're some kind of a nuisance, as something, oh, how can we stop these people coming up here and speaking all the time? Well, it's your job, and so I hope that you will not adopt these new rules.
Okay, thank you. Again, last call for Ms. Yu. Oh, there she is. Yes.
Good morning, Rules Committee members. My name is Grace Yu, and I came here for a different item and saw this special agenda item where you're basically taking the rights of people to speak before the city council or city governing bodies, and that's an incredible shame. This is supposed to be a democracy. You're elected by the people. What you're causing is for people to really get so infuriated that they have to recall you. That's what you're setting us up to do. It's a travesty that people spend an hour plus to come down to try to park, pay $20, and then told you can't speak or you're limited to one minute. Now you won't even let people give their, cede their time to the next. And then you also limit two minutes per committee agenda. This is amazingly ludicrous.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, just to clarify things, we've, we've been operating, using this policy for about six weeks. So it's not a surprise. We're not eliminating individuals' rights to speak. We're moving public comment from the end of the session to the beginning so that people can come here, they can speak, and if they choose to leave and go back to work, that they, they can. The neighborhood councils with community impact statements can speak up to five minutes. So I think we've done a lot to try to encourage and accommodate the public. So with that said, that's item five. We will adopt the motion and the council rules amended, I mean, the council rules as amendment, as amended, do that without objection. So now that brings us to item seven. So why don't, in fact, why don't we do four? And, and Mr. Clerk, you were right, that was an inadvertent vote. So I guess technically we have to reconsider the item. So without objection, we will reconsider the item, and then we'll have a comment on Okay, so, why don't we start out, I'm gonna try to split it up for and against, but I might mess that up a bit. Well, why don't we get Mr. Abrams, Abrams to come up, Jill Stewart, Ron Bitzer, Mickey Jackson, Jay Bieber, and I think Susan Hunter. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning. This is Stinky, the developer skunk. And at the next election, he's gonna be hanging around the necks of all the council members who don't vote today to enact the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative. Those council members will certainly attract strong challengers who will ask the following questions. Why would you rather that EIRs be done by the developers themselves than an independent body? Or let parking credits pile up until there is insufficient parking? Or allow general plan amendments for single lots rather than for the large areas intended by the city charter? Or approve a long series of ad hoc planning changes for individual projects to favor developers instead of putting planning department resources into updating the general and community plans? Well, there's no good answer to these questions, and Stinky will be there at every campaign appearance to remind them of it.
Thank you, sir. So if I could get the next speaker, Ms. Stewart, Bitzer, Jackson, Bieber, Hunter, yes.
Thank you. I'm Jill Stewart. I'm the campaign director for the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative. It will be on the March 7th ballot. I wanted to remind everybody in this chamber what is the essence of this measure. It is not really aimed at development or developers, which we support development. It's behavior modification law for the LA City Council. It stops the LA City Council from holding back room deals in which they grant huge projects that ignore the zone, require a zone change, height district change, or general amendment plan change. The public does not find out about these secret meetings and these deals for months and months and months. It's largely a done deal by the time the public comes along, and then they get a few little concessions like some extra trees. The city, the people who live in the city are sick of this. We want the city council to do its job. It's called writing a general plan. Every major city in the country does this. You guys have not updated yours for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could get the next speakers, again, we can get more speakers if you guys come up. Bitzer, Jackson, Bieber, Hunter.
Good morning. My name is Ron Bitzer, property owner within 500 feet of Laurel Plaza, where City Planning last week approved the project of 1.3 million square feet, 642 apartments, six levels of apartments in a single-family neighborhood. For over a year, I worked with the Neighborhood Association and tried to get Caltrans and City Planning to communicate. Now, I understand they don't get along, okay? But the 170 freeway runs along this project, and when, at City Planning, I asked to get a copy of the so-called September 6th findings of City Planning sent to Caltrans, I was told there was a delay. Well, it turns out the September 6th letter to Caltrans did not exist, and they produced then a September 20th letter to Caltrans saying, "We understand your concern."
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, and I know he was here earlier, but I don't see Mr. Bieber, and I don't know Ms. Hunter. Okay, I see you. Yes.
Mickey Jackson. You know, one of the tenants of history is a governing body or person usually doesn't know when they've gone too far until they feel the heat generated by that. And the city council has gone too far, and the citizens are angry. We, our movement is just growing by leaps and bounds. People are coming to us, they're flooding to us. We understand that you don't understand how far you've gone, but you will understand that you've gone too far very shortly. We will try to restore some order, some law, and some rule to this city council. I will end with a quote, "Have you at last no shame?"
Thank you. Come forward.
Good morning again, committee members. My name is Jay Bieber. I'm the outreach coordinator for the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative, and I wanted to speak on one of the items in the initiative, which is the issue of the developer being able to pick the consultant that does the EIR. This is an obvious conflict of interest. Everybody pretty much recognizes that. When the initiative is adopted, the city planners and professionals will pick the entity that does the EIR. That will prevent this conflict of interest where the consultant knows what the person who, and the entity that's hiring them wants the EIR to come out as. So this will fix one of those major problems that the city has, which is that the EIR always says that the project is gonna be good and not gonna have any impact if the developer is the one that picks it. So that will be fixed with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get Ms. Hunter.
Good morning. My name is Susan Hunter, and I'm here speaking out in, on behalf of the Coalition to Preserve Los Angeles. A city council has an option to adopt this measure, so I would suggest you just adopt it. The mayor blames Sacramento and says it is out of city's halls' hands to do anything about the runaway development in Los Angeles. City representatives continue to say that they want to do what's in the best interest of the citizens, and this is the city's opportunity to put your money where your mouth is and prove you are in control of the city and not the developers. I'm not the only person who is fed up with hearing how much city council doesn't want to do their job, but they still want to get paid for it. This is an opportunity to finally get a job done. Refusing to adopt this measure sends a clear signal who really runs the city.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walsh. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, well, what is this all about? This is about Neighborhood Integrity Initiative, comes on March 8th. It will stop the runaway development. You don't want us to get up here and exercise our five-minute rule, the five-minute rule is in and out.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh.
And Neighborhood Integrity Initiative. You can heckle me all you want, treat me, uh, what they want to do is get rid of us. They would like to see us up against the wall.
Mr. Walsh, stay on the subject.
The subject is your motivation for putting this on. If you want to arrest me for-
Mr. Walsh, last time, stay on the subject. Nobody wants to arrest you.
What is the subject? The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative is the subject here. You want to change the rules?
You're off the subject. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Okay, so if I could now have Mr. Gary, don't disrupt, Mr. Walsh, please. Be respectful to the other people that are here. If I could have Mr. Gary Tobin, Peter Gutierrez, Beverly Palmer, Adam Murray. We're running short on time, so if we could kind of hop to it, folk. Yes, Mr. Tobin. Yes.
My name is Gary Tobin. I'm President of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I encourage you to place this on the ballot, not put it in an ordinance, and I encourage you to help us defeat this measure, which is just what the ballot title says, a moratorium on construction and building of housing in our cities that will guarantee the loss of jobs, and it will guarantee that more people at the end of two years will be homeless than are homeless today. Council members and the mayor reached out to try to develop a compromise, and it didn't work because what proponents want is a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have Peter Gutierrez, followed by Beverly Palmer, yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Peter Gutierrez from the law firm Latham &amp; Watkins. As you know, I served as a Senior Assistant L.A. City Attorney before joining Latham, and before that, I was a Principal Deputy County Counsel, so I'm familiar with the rules governing ordinance adoption and vested rights. As pointed out in the September 21, 2016 City Attorney Report before you, the council has options. We support the option to call a special election and place the measure on the March 7, 2017 ballot, and urge the council not to adopt the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative ordinance. The ordinance has illegal provisions, including its attempt to retroactively unwind already approved projects, even though these are vested under law. The City Attorney was required by the Charter to present the ordinance to you without alteration for possible adoption, but that is not a determination or a finding by the City Attorney that the ordinance provisions are lawful or that they withstand legal challenge. The ordinance is harmful to our city, as many stakeholders have pointed out. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. So if I can get, I'm assuming this is Ms. Palmer. I'm looking for Adam Murray, looking for Christine Margiato. I know I messed that up. Gabriella, yes.
Beverly Palmer, I'm speaking for the Coalition to Preserve L.A. The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative addresses major planning deficiencies in the city's planning process. Over 103,000 registered Los Angeles voters signed the petition to place this measure on the ballot. The city clerk has certified that sufficient signatures have been gathered, and I'd like to thank the city clerk. I rarely get to say anything positive up here, but I would like to thank the clerk's office for their professionalism throughout the process. You have three options. The clerk has informed you that it will cost $0 to place it on the March 2017 ballot. If you're not going to adopt it outright, you should place it on the March ballot and give the citizens the right to vote. As for the validity of the initiative, it preserves all vested rights. That is a clear provision in the initiative. There is nothing about the measure that, that is problematic legally, and there is no reason to stop it from being adopted or to be placed on the March 2017 ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Council President, Councilman Harris-Dawson, Adam Murray from Inner City Law Center. I don't need to tell either of you that we have a homeless crisis in the city, and I don't need to explain to either of you how inexorably intertwined that crisis is with our lack of affordable housing in the city. I am standing before you today because I deeply believe, and every housing and homelessness organization that I'm aware of that has weighed in on this issue believes that the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative will exacerbate our affordable housing crisis in this city. I believe that this is a NIMBY, anti-housing, anti-growth initiative masquerading as an environmental-good government measure. And I would ask you to continue your strong record of being in favor of attacking our housing and homelessness crisis in the city by standing with us and opposing the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and let's do the last name for me. Help me.
Good morning. Christine Margiato with United Way of Greater Los Angeles.
I wasn't that off.
You're very close. As you know, there are 28,000 homeless Angelinos living on our streets every night, and every one of them deserves a place to call home. I know we share that value with you. For the last six years, we've worked on the Home for Good Initiative with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce and hundreds of partners throughout L.A. County. In that time, over 31,000 vulnerable Angelinos have moved off the streets and into permanent housing, thanks to the, the talented nonprofit developers who have worked with you at the city to build permanent supportive housing and affordable housing throughout the region. We ask that you stand with us and with the 100,000 Angelinos who have engaged in this issue through our home walk and, and other efforts, and we ask that you partner with us to defeat this ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Dora Gallo, Dora, if you could come up, and Doug, yes.
Hi. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Gabrielle Landeros, and I'm the Press Secretary for the L.A. County Federation of Labor. Today, I'm here to provide a brief statement on behalf of the Federation's Executive Secretary, Treasurer, Rusty Hicks. The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative is an anti-worker housing ban. It would hobble our construction industry. It would make it impossible for people in L.A. to find the jobs and housing they need to stay here, and it would make our homeless crisis worse. The L.A. County Federation of Labor and the Chamber of Commerce aren't often on the same side, but on this, we agree. The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative is bad for workers, bad for businesses, and bad for Los Angeles. Please do not let it become law. Let it go on the ballot, work with us to defeat it, and then let's all come together to work on a plan for L.A. that helps fight homelessness and creates jobs. Thanks.
Thank you. So again, if I can get Dora, Doug Haynes, Rachel Torres, Rachel Torres, Michael McLean. Good to see you.
Thank you. My name is Dora Gallo. I'm the CEO for Community of Friends, and we are one of those permanent supportive housing developers that have been referenced today. As an organization that focuses on homelessness, we believe that homelessness and, the homelessness crisis and our housing crisis is one and the same, and to get out of it, we have to build. Constraining the development of housing, even for two years, is not the solution. We need every tool in our toolkit to end the homeless crisis and the housing crisis. And I know the proposal exempts 100% affordable housing projects, but it does rule out general plan amendments, which we have used to build affordable housing in the San Fernando Valley. We need every tool in our toolkit. The CAO sites that have been put out to address homelessness recently, of the 12, about 11 of them require general plan amendments. So even what the city is trying to do to end homelessness with, with this proposal in place is not going to help end that. And so we, we say put it on the ballot, and then we'll work towards resolving the, the issues and, and make sure that housing continues to get built. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Torres. I'm a Senior Research Analyst with Unite Here Local 11. We represent over 22,000 hotel and restaurant workers in the Los Angeles area. The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative is not good for neighborhoods, for workers, and we do not believe it does have any integrity. What is plain and simple is it's a housing ban. We want to live here, and we want to work here. Folks who live on the streets, 28,000 people, including families and veterans, working people, want a home that they can call our own. L.A.'s existing plans were written a generation ago for a different city. The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative is trumped up, not in my backyard. It seeks to make L.A. great, only for a narrow group of people. We want to have an L.A. with good jobs and homes for all. We are strongly opposed to this becoming law, and we want to work with this council to defeat it at the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Doug makes his way to the center. Mike, I'm looking for Michael McLean. I'm looking for Annie Gagan. I'm looking for Grace Yu. Yes, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you. My name is Doug Haynes. First off, the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative would only affect less than 5% of all development in the city of Los Angeles. Approximately 95% of development is by right to begin with. This is general plan amendment issue primarily, and it doesn't affect most of the projects that go forward or currently go forward. Also, the whole issue about homeless is a canard, and the situation is rents have been going up dramatically while housing has been going up in my neighborhood. We don't have an housing crisis, we have an affordable rent crisis in my neighborhood. As a neighborhood council, we send out thousands of letters regarding notices for certain projects. Hundreds of those come back as unoccupied because they're being used as Airbnbs by these major projects. So they remain vacant for that use instead. And Sunset Gordon is a good example, the East Town is a good example, the W Hotel Project and so forth. So the initiative is a response to the community's concerns about not being able to have effective and proper development, and I hope it will go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, Michael, so Annie Gagan, Annie, Grace Yu, Ms. Gonzalez, yes, sir.
Good morning, all. My name is Michael McLean. I'm strongly opposed to the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative. I work at a legal nonprofit services company as an attorney in the Development Department where we raise funds to help the very people that the Coalition to Preserve L.A. says that they are here to help. I feel very strongly that any moratorium on any kind of building, by the numbers and every reputable paper shows, that a restriction on housing is, it will raise rents everywhere. I have two daughters and a dual income with my wife. She's a nurse, I'm an attorney, and we are struggling to find another place to live in L.A. if we have, for, for our kids. I have two daughters that I want to keep in L.A. because I love L.A. and I want to stay in L.A. Now, any two-year moratorium on building, I don't care what you call it, is going to drive building outside of L.A. And I care about jobs, and I care about housing, and I care about people being able to stay in the city. And Neighborhood Integrity Initiative, regardless of how its intent, is a pretty cynical initiative wrapped in community activism that is extremely well-funded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I can get Ms. Gagan, Grace Yu, I think it's Lydia Ponce, and Ms. Gonzalez, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Annie Gagan. The Neighborhood Integrity Initiative actually exempts 100% affordable housing. That's 100% affordable housing is exempted. I was at the meeting where our mayor graciously heard from supporters of this initiative, and he heard from leaders of communities across the city of Los Angeles about why they support it and what they're going through in their neighborhoods. He said he welcomed any ballot on the, he welcomed this initiative on the ballot. One of the most precious rights of our democratic process is an initiative. It has long been judicial policy to apply liberal construction to this power wherever it is challenged in order that the right not be improperly annulled. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Lydia Ponce of Venice, American India Movement SoCal and Idle No More. We have to address the fact that L.A. DBS is providing over-the-counter applications, approvals, skirting the law with regards to expanding a closet and demolishing a home, RSO, MELLO, or Protected as Affordable Housing. Throughout the Los Angeles city, this is happening in this building, down on Figueroa, at City Planning, on 7th floor and 6th floor. So we have to address this. This moratorium is much needed because the unhoused services that our council people, good people, are trying to offer is just a Band-Aid on a deep gaping infested wound to humanity. Offer showers and all of that, but you have to preserve what we have right now as affordable, be it RSO, be it the general plan specific to affordability. So we can have a job, but you're going to have people sleeping in their cars and not having a place to shower. I know from the traffic directors, the people who do work in DOT, all the way to the counter at-
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Yu.
Good morning. Grace Yu, on behalf of the Environmental Justice Collaborative, which is one of the organizations that is suing the city and Colony Holdings for spot zoning in a working-class neighborhood in Koreatown. The residents are tired of the city bulldozing over them. This Neighborhood Integrity Initiative is needed to ensure that the working-class people of Koreatown's voices are heard and respected. For more than nine years, City Council District 10 and the entire Commission for Planning Board said no to this development, requesting 27 stories where the rest of the neighborhood is basically 1, 2, and 3. That's 27 stories, completely out of character. We're not opposed to development. We support smart development. We want the right kind of development that will be good for our city, and that's why we need to put this on the ballot in March.
Thank you, thank you. And your first name again? I swear I'm going to get it right.
My name's Sochi Gonzalez.
I don't, I have that.
I was, I was before City Council last week, opposing a project, Martin Expo. The community was overwhelmingly opposed to this project. It was transit-adjacent, not transit-oriented. It was going to put 10,000 additional car trips into our community. We are already operating at failing at our intersections. I think they've gone beyond failing. They, they've added a category below that for us, and our councilman approved it. And people on the streets, people who live in West L.A. and people all over Los Angeles are beginning to understand how skewed the process is, how skewed against the residents and in favor of the developers who have unfettered access to our councilmen and women. And we, we desperately need this initiative to right that. Thank you.
And weren't you a member of the Neighborhood Council?
I, I am a member, yes.
Does no, I want, Sochi.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment on this item. I think just by listening to the back and forth, you can see how much of an emotional item this is. And I just, I personally believe that the fairest way to deal with it would be to ask the voters of this city what they think. The individuals that put the signatures together were, worked hard, they were upfront. They indicated that they wanted March. They played by the rules. The signatures have been verified. So it would be my recommendation, or my suggestion, that we adopt Recommendation 3 and Attachment 2 of the City Attorney's Report that would place this item on the voters at the March 2017 primary. So without objection, that will be the order. Thank you all for coming down. So now that brings us to item number seven. We are running out of time on item seven. Maybe what we'll do, Mr. Clerk, because we have to start council, or let me just say this, on item seven, it, it will be my recommendation that we adopt the CLA report and the resolution. We do have cards on this item, and it's my understanding that the individuals that filled out the cards are in support of that occurring. If that's the case, and we only have a few moments, I'd like to just read your cards, have them given to the clerk, they'll be read into the record, and then we can vote on the issue. If not, why don't we just take a few for now, a couple of minutes? I think I have a Angela DiArcy, Chrissy Castro, Edward, can't make out your last name, and Lydia Ponce. If you're here, you got to come on. If not, we're going to, because we're going to be starting council in a few minutes. Are you here on public comment? Does some, one person want to speak representing the group?
Yes.
Well, you should do it now, sir. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself. Yes.
This is the resolution, right?
That's not yet.
Oh, committee, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a misunderstanding? Okay, my bad, our bad. Okay, so on item seven then, we will submit the cards to the clerk, and without objection, we will adopt the CLA report and resolution. Do you have that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Is there any more business before this committee?
Uh, no, sir. That clears the-
This committee is adjourned.